30th, it is 7:00 PM, and please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and it is with deep sadness that we acknowledge the passing of Dr. Betsy Webb after a courageous battle with breast cancer. Dr. Webb was a devoted leader and a champion of educational excellence in Bangor in the state of Maine. It is a blessing to be surrounded by so many caring and dedicated educators in the Bangor School Department who continue her aspirations for student success. One of her many legacies is to have hired and worked side by side with so many wonderful educators. Her impact is profound and lasting, said James Tager, Superintendent of the Bangor School Department. Dr. Webb believed that all students are capable of learning at high levels and that the key to their success is the acceleration of learning. She was a public educator for 38 years and served as Superintendent of the Bangor School Department for 13 of those years. Dr. Webb's leadership resulted in increased academic achievement and the development of four academic academies at Bangor High School, which gained state and national attention for student success in college preparation. Dr. Webb was the Maine School Superintendent Association's Outstanding Leader in 2012 and the 2013 Maine Superintendent of the Year. Four national blue ribbon schools of excellence were awarded to Bangor Schools during her tenure. Her legacy will continue throughout the countless lives of students that she has touched. We extend our condolences to her family at this time. Please join us in a moment of silence in memory of Dr. Webb. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Tager?
Yes, we're adding E1B Personnel Extra Duty Assignments.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Passes 6-0, thank you.
Okay, and public comments? Just as a quick reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. And as always, before starting, please state your name and place of residence. Do we have any public comments today? None online, right?
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to superintendents' proposals and updates. We have action items. The first is a community solar power.
Yes, thank you Chair Hassan. I'm recommending approval of the community's solar power proposal. Before we get a motion or a vote, I would certainly open this up for discussion. Jerry Hayman's done a lot of homework on this and a lot of you have asked questions. So if there's any questions you may have before we take a vote, Chair, I think that might be a good idea.
Any discussion questions? I know several of you had sent me emails and I tried to push it out with Jerry's answers. Oh, Caroline.
Hi. So as a student, I just had a question related to the length of this agreement. It's a 20-year plan. And, you know, 20 years is a long time and I just wanted to know why we're picking this plan and what are like the risks that we're taking on by taking this long-term plan?
Excellent question.
Jerry, if you'll come up as well with Nathan, that'd be great.
If you look at what the State of Maine said when they created the law for these plans, they actually recommended 20-year, 30-year plan. And everybody I was talking to, the heads of line of references also have 20-year plans. Very standard length of time.
Thank you. And as far as financial risks, there is no cash outlay whatsoever from the Bangor School Department for this plan. We're simply using our usage of electricity and applying against the solar farms being built in Bar Harbor. And through that, the State of Maine wants to reach a level of green energy, and this is part of their solution to that. So the incentive is for folks like the Bangor School Department to join these agreements and apply our usage to the solar farms. And then we actually get a discount off our bill because of it without using any of our funds to do so. So as long as the solar farm produces electricity, there is no risk at all in this plan. And the estimated savings have been guaranteed for 25% of the distribution part of our bill. Right now, we have our bill basically cut in half. The supply side, we've been joined with the city of Bangor for many, many years now to go in the market and look for the best price on the supply side, and we continue to do that. So we have actually another company that we pay through that agreement. So what we're doing with this net energy credit bill is on the distribution side through the versant side. And the savings have been guaranteed at 25%, estimated at $87,000 per year. Life of the 20-year contract is about $1.7 million.
Member Mendel.
Yeah. So what would happen if, like, God forbid, there's some act of nature and Bar Harbor floods or, you know, something happens to your farm before the contract is up? What would happen to our, what would happen to the contract then?
Well, the, sure, come on up, Nathan.
In the agreement, we should have something that gives us, say, 12 months, 24 months to become operational again. If we can't, then you're just opting out of the farm at that point. That's like force majeure, acts of God, union strikes, terrorist attacks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be in the contract?
Yeah. Those are pretty standard and regardless if you do a 20-year, whatever type of agreement, you know?
Okay. I assumed that there would be something like that, but I just wanted to check. Then, this is probably for Jerry. I went on the Public Utilities Commission website and there are like literally hundreds of companies that offer this. And I know you said this is the best offer that you've seen come to us.
Yes.
I'm still kind of concerned that we're just going with one company before we've talked to others and gotten other estimates. It sounds like this is a great deal. I have nothing against it at all. I'm just a little concerned about entering into a long-term contract like this. We're not spending money, but we're saving a lot of money. And is this the most savings that we can get?
So we, I get several offers per week and have been for a while, and I think Superintendent Tager has as well. And every offer that I've seen is in the 10% to 15% range. Nobody's been above 15%. And the references that I checked, that's one of the things I want to know. What kind of deal do you have? And the 25% is above what they have as well. So the contract itself would work similar, no matter who we went with, because it involves the net energy credits to a solar farm, et cetera, applied to your bill, that type of thing. So the mechanics would be the same. It's just the amount of the discount.
Just to clarify too, we did check all the references that were provided for us. Jerry did a nice job with that. And also, we've run this through two different attorneys, so I feel very safe in recommending this.
Yes.
Can you speak, Jerry, of the school district that you called and checked as a reference to that's comparable?
Yep. I talked with Dawn, and I'm going to butcher her last name, Fattimore, but she's from the Dover, Sherborne Regional School District. And she was more than glad to talk with me. In fact, she said she was anxious to get back to me. I had emailed her and I couldn't wait, so I called her and she said, "I'm glad you called." So the town of Dover actually developed the solar plans, needed a partner, and they turned to the school to be similar to what we're proposing here. And she described the plan as free money. It was seamless. They internally trained their accountants to track it to make sure the discounts applied to the bill are, you know, all the way through, because there is a lag between the credits that would appear on the versant bill versus the separate billing from the billing companies. There's a company called Perch that they use to do the billing. So there's a delay and we just want to make sure everything matches up and the savings promised actually follows through. So yeah, there, I believe she said they were 2016, so they're six years into it. She's very happy.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Do we just take a vote for this?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Passes 6-0, thank you.
Okay, and next we have a public hearing for LD 577, Child and Adult Care Food Program.
Okay, we want to take a vote to go into the open hearing.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
And all in favor?
Passes 6-0, thank you. LD 577, An Act to Increase Access to Nutritious Foods in Schools by Implementing an After-School Food Program for At-Risk Students. A school administrative unit shall participate in the federal child and adult care food program established in 42 United States Code Section 1766 as required under this paragraph. The commissioner shall assist school administrative units subject to the requirements of this paragraph in developing a plan to participate in the federal child and adult food program to serve at-risk students who attend after-school programming and obtaining federal, state, and private funds to pay for this program. Beginning with the 2019-2020 school year, a school administrative unit with at least one public school in which at least 50% of students qualified for free reduced lunch during the preceding school year shall participate in the federal child and adult care food program in accordance with 42 United States Code Section 1766 during the school year subject to the provisions of this paragraph. Notwithstanding other provisions of this paragraph, a school administrative unit that is required to operate a federal child and adult food program may choose to not operate such a program if it is determined by a voting, vote of governing body of the school administrative unit after notice in a public hearing that operates such a program would be financially or logistically impracticable. Okay, any comments? Sure.
I don't know if this is comments among the public or among the group, but I'll comment now just to say I think maybe I should abstain from this vote because I'm on the chair, I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors for Good Shepherd Food Bank.
Okay.
And our Chair is also on the board with me. And we haven't had anything to do with this, but I don't want to create the impression that we're not proceeding with this other plan because we're going with Good Shepherd, where Marwa and I serve on the Good Shepherd Board. So I think it would be better to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. I was going to say the same, so thank you. Member Sprague.
If no more comments, we can vote to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Okay, passes. Thank you. I'm recommending that we choose not to operate a federal child and adult care food program as Bangor has already established a partnership with Good Shepherd Food Bank, which provides the requirements stated in LD 577. And you'd want to take a vote on that, too.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
It passes 4-0, thank you.
And abstentions?
Two abstentions, thank you.
Okay. And then next, we have informational items. The first item is a report of reassignments.
Reporting the following reassignments, Kelly Hasselbrecht from special education teacher at Bangor High School to multilingual teacher for the district.
Okay, and next we have report of resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignations, Casey Quinn, special education teacher, Downey School, Kelly Hasselbrecht, .5 IEP Coordinator, Bangor High School.
Thank you. And I just have a quick question regarding the reassignment. And is that, and this may be a question for Director Babbin, is it normal to kind of switch between departments like that? And are there any specific qualifications for like a multilingual teacher versus special ed?
Yeah, let me start that answer and then we'll bring Kristy up as well. You know, it says that it's a reassignment, but we did post that position and this person is qualified for the position. Is there anything that you would want to add? You did, we went through the application process and this was our best candidate.
Okay. And there are special qualifications and, okay, perfect, perfect. All righty, thank you. Oh, yeah. Is it about the same thing? Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I didn't do any numbers, but just on quick glance in recent minutes, it seems like we're losing special ed teachers. Am I, am I picking that up correctly or am I not? I'm just seeing a lot of, maybe just a lot of turnover or a lot of like in and out.
Losing positions. We have people that maybe are taking different jobs and we're reposting positions.
Okay, so have we lost anybody in terms of total numbers?
We haven't lost any positions. If you're asking, have we cut back any positions? No.
Okay.
Our staffing has stayed the same. If anything, we've grown. The multilingual is a new position because we have more students in the system that need those services.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's just confusing because you see the, you know, taking from here and putting there, so it looks like it, we're losing.
So we're posting that position that Kelly was in.
Okay, moving on to business action items. We have action items, we have the minutes for the organizational meeting of November 14, 2022.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the November 14, 2022 organizational school committee meeting and the November 16 regular school committee meeting.
Okay, we'll take those two together. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Passes 6-0, thank you.
Next, we have personnel and we have extra duty assignments.
Thank you Chair. I'm recommending the following extra duty assignments for the school year 2022, 2023. Carmen Curry, Special Education Department Head, Bangor High School. Ashley Thornton, Special Education Department Head, Bangor High School.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Passes 6-0, thank you.
Next, we have donations and Member Luciano, you're up.
Thank you. To the Abraham Lincoln School from the Charleston Church, winter coats having a total dollar value of $950. To Fruit Street School from the Charleston Church, winter coats having a total dollar value of $500. To the Vine Street School from the Charleston Church, winter coats having a total dollar value of $600. To the Fairmount School from the Charleston Church, winter coats having a total dollar value of $375. To the Bangor Regional Program from First National Bank, funds to purchase 10 30 Days Lost in Space Coating Kits, having a total dollar value of $970. To the Bangor Regional Program from Katahdin Trust, funding of two gas-powered bicycle kits and accessories, having a total dollar value of $409. To the Bangor High School from the Tremudo Porter Foundation, a cash donation for veteran induction and ceremony, having a total dollar value of $7,500. To the Downey School from Charleston Church, winter coats having a total dollar value of $500. To the Downey School from Betty Van Tobel, hats and mittens, having a total dollar value of $100. To the Downey School from Pelkey Oil, 112 turkey dinners, having a total dollar value of $5,600. To the Downey School from Bangor Savings Bank, peanut butter and jelly, having a total dollar value of $560. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And can I get a motion, please?
Can I just comment? I, my employer is listed here and I don't know if I should abstain from this vote. It probably is just a housekeeping thing, but I'm just going to abstain to keep it clean.
Okay. Thank you, Member Sprague. Motion, please?
So moved. Second.
And all in favor?
Passes 5-0, thank you.
And with much appreciation. Thank you. Next, we have, oh, and we have one abstention.
Yep.
Okay. We have introduction items and we have a first reading of policies. We have revised policy GDB7, Support Staff Compensation Guide.
I'm recommending first reading of a revised policy, revised policy GDB7, Support Staff Compensation Guide.
And can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Passes 6-0, thank you.
Great. And on to committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee to start off? Member Soret.
Thank you. And first, I just want to thank Superintendent Tager and Director, Communications Director Ray Finney and of course Chair Hassan and for all the work on the comment at the beginning, the statement at the beginning about Betsy Webb. And I just, I just want to take an opportunity to add a few personal additions. I want to recognize Betsy's leadership on the Southern Penobscot Regional Program for Children with Exceptionalities. She was a longtime leader of that organization. She was incredibly proud of the work she did for that, for that organization, collaboration of almost 25 school districts that was able to offer excellent education to Penobscot Counties, some of Penobscot Counties' neatest kids. And she was instrumental in its success and it was a privilege to work with her on that. The other thing I wanted to mention, I, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with educators, administrators, teacher educators over the last several days about Betsy's passing. And two things really came through in those conversations that I just want to convey. One of the things that came out clearly was how much they admired her and how much they admired her mentorship of them and how she pushed them to be the best educator they could be. The other thing that came through loud and clear was Betsy's unrelenting commitment to improving the lives of children. And I think that's an incredible legacy and she'll be missed and my heartfelt condolences to the family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Member Sprague.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very well said. Tim, I appreciate those comments and you probably knew her from serving through this board with her directly as well as anyone here. I didn't serve with Dr. Webb directly, but I did sit around this table with her nine years in a row when we would have the joint workshops for the City Council and School Committee. And I think a lot of people knew that she was battling this illness, but it still felt very sudden and jarring when the news came out that she had passed. I was always, in my time on the City Council, I think, a pretty strong advocate for the schools. And I really always felt like Dr. Webb and I connected on that and that she was a kindred spirit for really believing in Bangor and believing that these schools could be a real draw for this community and were one of the most important things, if not the most important thing, for people choosing where they were going to live. And I always felt like she budgeted with that in mind in terms of having the resources students and teachers needed, being mindful of the implication to taxpayers, but just really wanting to sell the Bangor Schools as a drawing point for people coming here. And I learned a lot from her about education, just in being in those meetings with her, about the formulas they would use and the lenses they would look at and how you needed this amount of class time and this amount of extracurricular time and thinking about requiring kids to do extracurricular activities, but then supporting them in terms of facilitating that happening. Like I have family members that are in more, less well-off districts that the kids have to pay for the extracurricular activities and it just is a dampening effect on participation. And it was never that way. It's never been that way in Bangor. And a lot of that is Dr. Webb's DNA through the whole system. So really going to miss her. She was a great advocate for Bangor and the proof is in the pudding, so to speak. But it was always a pleasure to sit around the table with her and to learn from her. And sorry, she's gone. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to committee appointments or updates, do we have any? Member Mendel.
Yeah, the new policy committee met on, when was that, Monday? Dr. Harris Medberg and Member Sor and I met as that committee and it was our first meeting. So we were just kind of getting oriented and Dr. Harris Medberg educated us about the policymaking process, where, where policies come from and they don't just drop out of the sky, apparently. So, so that was useful to know. So yeah, just, you know, the importance of having policy based in state statute really kind of came through clear to me. So we are going to be meeting again in two weeks to talk about the concussion policy, a revision of that. And we'll be meeting periodically to review policies before they come to the committee so that if you guys have any questions about the policies, Sue and I would be well positioned to answer those questions.
I have to tell you, Dr. Harris Medberg, that Member Mendel was so excited about how thorough you were about everything, so thank you. She was excited about that, so thank you. And this is the first time we've ever had it. You know, I've been on the committee for now four years and so it's exciting to have that and to just kind of keep, keep up to date on all the new policies to come forth. Thank you. Any other? Yep, Member Luciano.
Since Member Sor isn't here and I don't think, then Member Jandro. Sorry, I'm sorry. I can do any Italian last name, but outside of that, I'm sorry. I will get it. I, UTC had an open house last week and I took my family because that's what we do and it was so nice and so bright and open. And the number, I think we have the highest number of Bangor students we've had in a very long time, if not ever. It's just such a fun place. They are doing their dinner or their lunches again. They're posting them on their Facebook page. Those are on Thursdays. And the dollar iced coffees you can get on Friday morning are like next level. So just throwing that out there. But yes, UTC is back up to their dinners and I took a bunch of photos, but I was like, I shouldn't bring a slideshow in. I'll wait till like closer to the holidays for that, but yeah, just sharing that.
Thank you. Thank you. And Member Soret and I will have our first DEIB Advisory Committee on the 8th, if I'm not mistaken, which is next Thursday. So we're super excited about that. Any other updates? No? What about from Member Sada for a student committee update?
Okay. So the students just got back from November break, so you know, people are getting reoriented again. And just an update on the Jared Box fundraiser, which was a district-wide gene day and a movie night for students. We raised over $500 for our goal to make Jared boxes for children who are hospitalized at Northern Light. And the VHS Service Club will be putting those boxes together next week and sending them out. So that was really great. Students have really engaged with that fundraiser. In addition, the, there will be a winter concert at Bangor High School on December 8th at 7:00 PM, including the high school band, orchestra, and chorus. And winter sports are starting up again. You can see their schedules getting posted. Student athletes have started doing impact testing again to monitor health, which was kind of put off during COVID, but is back. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I would like to introduce you all to a new student committee member. This is Luke Dusablon, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. Luke is a current junior who is an active presence in the school and the third of four Dusablon children to attend Bangor High in recent years. He has broad academic interest and is currently taking AP Government and Politics with Mr. Pelletier. Luke earned a leadership role in the JROTC program this year and has his sights set on a future that involves leadership and service to his community. Welcome, Luke, and if you wish to say something?
Absolutely. I am Luke Dusablon. I'm a junior at Bangor High School. And first off, I want to start by thanking Superintendent Tager and Principal And first off, I want to start by thanking Superintendent Tager and Principal Butler and everyone else on the school committee for being, so welcome to me, welcoming to me this evening. The relationship between the school committee and the schools is something that I've always wanted to learn more about. And so I think this is a really good opportunity for me to learn more about that. And I think it's really good that we have student representatives on here to ensure that students are being heard throughout the school committee. So I want to thank you all for welcoming me.
Thank you.
And as you know, Member Sada graduates will always have one who will, you know, kind of introduce the other one to this process. So thank you, Member Sada. Moving on to informational items, we have several important dates. We have Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Wednesday, December 23rd, 2022 is Bangor Day. Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, we have regular meeting here, 7:00 PM in the council chambers. And Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. And do we have any final questions or comments from the committee? Going once? Alrighty, seeing none? Can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Passes six zero, thank you. Well, short and sweet.